I call this meeting order, please stand for the fudge allegiance. My fudge allegiance stood the flag of the United States of America and is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain sitting for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call please.
Brochus.
Here.
Rechner.
Hmm.
Bornheart.
Here.
Martina.
Here.
There is an executive session held prior to the nice council meeting and also on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two to discuss personnel and possible litigation. I make the motion to add one item to the agenda resolution twenty twenty three dash oh five for micro to be signatory for the Chicago High School Stadium project. Do I have a second to add that?
A second.
Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice.
Are there any public comment on agenda items at this time, public comment? All right, I make the motion to approve the minutes and reports, minutes from December twelfth and twenty six from the police department treasurer, code office, health department, and planning commission. Do I have a second?
A second. Rechner.
Yeah.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice. Brochus.
Yes. We're gonna talk about some possible sweep updates and donations. We have Kurt on the phone here to speak about them. Kurt, can you hear us?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Well, we can't, the public probably can't, but we'll just relay the message to them.
All right, and you have received, you all have been called in some out of the area to work with us. So we just have three donations that the city received that I'd like to counsel to accept donations through the sweep committee. The first one, the Americas Host Company donated two hundred dollars. The summary police officers association donated five hundred dollars. And Evangelical Community Hospital donated ten thousand dollars. And Evangelical Community Hospital, their donation is for the naming of the trail that goes from Bright Street and connects onto North Sixth Street at the off-street parking area. So that's what we call the Evangelical Community Hospital, Wild Street.
Alrighty, so if you didn't hear, he said there are donations from Evangelical to be naming a trail of ten thousand from the summary police officers association for five hundred and Americas Host Company for two hundred. So I make the motion to accept those donations towards the sweep project. Do I have a second?
Second.
And please sweep committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, the sweep, the sweep committee. And Rick Sander.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Any other updates, Kurt?
That's all I needed, thank you all so very much.
All right, thank you Kurt, appreciate it.
See you.
Yep, bye-bye. All right, moving on, there is no unfinished business, but there is new business. So I make the motion to accept the following appointments for the twenty twenty three boards and committees. We have Mike Sender for civil service, Kathy for seeing for housing authority board, Thomas Fetter for the zoning hearing board, Ryan McDonald for the planning commission, Larry Walfer for the municipal authority board, Rocky Bear, Preston Ross, Bruceable for the HARP Recreation Board, four-year term for Darth Clock and one-year terms for David Persing, Jenna Ister, Whitaker, Slade Shrek, Lee Bartovic, Don Shite, Board of Appeals, Preston Ross, and Todd Raybuck, Janet Doherty for the Tree Commission, and for the sweep Kurt Palovich, Donald Rupp, Joe Judy, and Jamie Keat. Do I have a second for those four positions? Yes, sir.
Under the, under the zoning board, Tom Federer, is he the alternate? Because we have three, I believe, already. We have.
No, Ms. Ekra.
She did.
She did.
Okay, then we should, those should have another as an owner?
Yeah, we have Mr. Wardman that is.
Oh, he's still yours.
Any other questions on those appointments? All right, so I make the motion, do I have a second?
Martina.
I'm gonna say yes to all, but I'm gonna stay into housing and recreation board. That works.
Right, Ice.
Most thing for the name Whitaker.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
As we discussed, I guess last year, seems so long ago, but not really, employee bonuses if there was a carryover, excuse me, which there was for, from speaking with treasurer troop, as we discussed previously, five hundred for full-time, three hundred for part-time, with the acceptance after reviewing with obviously the supervisor from that department and going over the course of the year of twenty twenty two. Are there any questions about that as we previously spoke or anything like that? No questions, anyone? All right, so I make the motion to approve the employee bonuses for the carryover, five hundred for full-time and three hundred for part-time in twenty twenty.
When is the actual apology coming?
It was.
I'm sorry.
It was, it was.
Seventeen thousand somewhere.
It was, I think it was seventeen thousand two hundred dollars. And that was for part-time, I think there was around eleven, if my number's correct, and twenty-seven full-timers, I think that's the number that I wrote down, I didn't write it down in front of you.
What are we gonna do for the taxpayers, are we gonna repay?
We can if we want to, I mean, that's up to you, councilman, I swear, we can look in that for next meeting or some sort of.
Well, we're having hard times too out there.
I, I'm not disagreeing, but at the same time, our biggest assets to the city and the taxpayers are these employees that run that million-dollar equipment. And if you're against it, you can happily vote no, I'm not saying, I'm right or wrong, I'm just trying to show our workers that they are the biggest asset to the city, they keep our taxes down.
Appreciate that, but the taxpayers today, this is the worst time of the year. Giving those dollars away because they work so hard to pay us. So it's just like.
Go ahead. Okay, so I make the motion, do I have any second? All right, I guess there is no second, so therefore the employee bonuses not happening for the employees. All right, Councilman Barnhart, fees.
I make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash one application fees and professional fees regarding the zoning, planning, stormwater, and permit. Permit. Fees are here, they're in the code office, if anybody wants to see them, fees.
Mike speak on that, because this is the end of your.
Yeah, Mike, can you just speak about the fees though?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike. Go ahead, Mike. Sorry.
Nothing, okay.
I knew you were gonna say something.
That's all right.
You embarrassed yourself, I think it's first time.
Yeah, so Mike Thomas with Mactech, two thousand and seven graduate. So what I have here is a big printout of our fee schedule currently. And in a nutshell, if someone comes in for a zoning permit and Mike needs to consult either Joel or myself, the taxpayers have to actually pay for any of those overages over what the application fee is. So we've looked at three fees in particular, one is just for any zoning permit that he might need consultation services for. The second one would be for stormwater drainage projects. And the third one would be your typical land development subdivision plans. And what I have here, what the previous fees used to be, which were fixed, for example, under zoning, the zoning permit used to be fifty bucks, no matter what, no matter what resources really took to review it, it was fifty bucks. It looks like we're proposing seventy-five dollars, but we're gonna say plus consultant fee. So if Mike feels he can either duel my help or another consultant of some kind, we can stick together a notice, so all property owners, if you can. More or less, they're gonna sign that at the time of application, and it's just gonna, they're gonna acknowledge that any of those fees are reimbursed, or need to be reimbursed. It also says on there, going through the jewel, we added that all review services will be paused if any of these is not paid within thirty days, again, protects, protects the city there. And we wouldn't issue a final permit or release of plan until everything is squared.
And then Mike did double-check our readiness, to be sure it did not contradict anything.
Right, so some of our sections are a little bit squishier than I'd like. Going over a couple of them, Joel, I think we're, I think we're okay for now. So again, regular zoning fee, we're proposing it to be increased from fifty dollars to seventy-five plus any consultant fees. The stormwater drainage plan, if someone came in to do something like that, currently there was zero application fee, and there was some language to cover consultant costs. So now we're proposing that to be a fixed rate of one twenty-five plus consultant fees, and then agreed that was spoken. And the base fee that we're talking about, that is covering the admin costs, that's covering the admin costs and things like that associated with the maintenance permits. For the SAL though, that's where we have minor subdivision, major, minor and major land developments. We previously had fees that ranged in like, almost like a hundred, like a thousand bucks. We're proposing a fixed fee of two hundred and fifty plus consultant fees. That way it only takes an hour of my time, so I guess only three fifty, around some half a billion thousand bucks. On the contrary, rather than a thousand bucks, if it's a terrible plan and drawn out outside of the town, we see it doesn't have to be different. So there, and also for Joel's request, we did add to the fee schedule that the applicant is responsible for acquiring advertising costs associated with the specialty. It's the only thing that can't take care of these levels, that they would have to handle that cost at all. That continues to rise up, of course, very good. Questions on this? Squishy, the morning could be a little. And I do have the code references here as well, for any questions in particular for what we have in the code in particular for each of those three fees currently that says that we can charge a fee more or less in accordance with our fee schedule.
If somebody comes in, Mike, and asks for a zoning hearing, do they, they come to you to schedule that?
For a zoning hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I would, I would ask or request that, or explicit with them about the fees and what could be the adalants necessary and be explicit with them about that. Not that they want to come in and think, oh, my, this is seventy-five dollars, I'm gonna see it.
This is, this is actually two different things. The zoning hearing would actually be in addition to what Mike just explained. This is just a application, someone coming in saying, hey, I want to do this, and then I review his plan. While you're gonna be engineering to look at this, and the stormwater, or dish water, or gonna have to look at another plan for possible land development, or even a subdivision, if you make addresses and somewhere correct, that is the, that is the purpose of before. We used to charge a thousand for land development and five hundred for subdivision. And as Mike explained, sometimes we would go over that, and the city has to, have to eat that. We're here now, we're going to take it where the plan presenter is gonna be responsible for everything.
But then there's still gonna be the regular zoning, the zoning hearing.
Correct, yeah, and all those are additional, those are all additional to the initial zoning review.
Okay.
Or purpose.
Thank you.
All right. Cause I can, yeah, so go ahead.
Well, we did budget, it was based on the old fees, new fees, or?
You'll have to ask Councilman Barnhart about it. Or Jeff, or this.
Yeah, let me look into it, I'll get back to you.
Well, tonight suggested not make any changes tonight, to figure out whether it's part of the budget or not, in case we have to change the budget. We have thirty days at the usual.
Yes.
It had to be on the old figures, you just got the new thing.
I'm sure it was on the old figures.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Well.
So Jeff will say. So they're, they're based on those figures, the budget.
Hey, I suggested that someone's analysis, to see how much it's done.
We don't know. I don't know, I mean, it could be zero.
You have an idea, where you did it?
I can give you a guess.
Okay.
I can give you a guess.
Well, that's what you're giving us.
A guess is gonna matter.
Did you give us a guess of the budget first?
Always.
Okay.
Yeah, but you don't matter, if I say zero, it could be zero, we could pull.
First, you wanna guess?
When you did the budget, when you did your numbers before, that was based on a guess.
Sure.
On the old numbers, okay, so give us a guess behind the new numbers. Otherwise, you know, the budget's gonna be screwed off, which, you're not worried about, I'm not worried about.
Well, it's up to Councilman Barnhart what he would like to do with this topic at this time. We can either table it or vote on it, it's up to you, Councilman Barnhart.
Just table it till we get the budget.
We have.
Mike, is there time you got between now and next council meeting? Do you see anything uprising between the next two weeks? All right, so, sorry, I didn't, either Mike.
The plan for ELA, the Chicago team, will be coming in.
So you can probably approve this, and then if there's a justice that we have to make in the back, because we have thirty days of the budget.
I was gonna say.
Are you questioning the amount of income that we're gonna get?
Well, obviously it's gonna change.
Yeah, but we don't, it, it matters on how many we get. We could budget for ten and get twenty.
Right.
We could budget for ten and get five.
Let me explain to you what it is to the job, Jeff based that on a number, okay? So take whatever he did before and apply the new numbers.
Well, we can do that, we can apply the new numbers on, on figuring what we get down the year or whatever. So I mean, that's gonna be the thing to do, but that's due to a budget.
I think the reason for this is because we weren't eating a lot of money.
I thought the point is that we approved a budget based on numbers.
Yes.
I would change it, based on a guess.
So do a guess, same numbers. Same numbers as last year.
I make a motion that we, if these be added, professional fees. Have a second.
Second.
Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
We're on the applications.
We're on the signatory for the high school project.
Well, I'm, I'm making a motion to approve a resolution twenty twenty three dash five, Michael Rhodes, a signatory for the Chicago High School Stadium project.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice. Brochus.
Yes, keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Before I go on here, there's the commercial inspection contract and fees. We have an exemption board, because people can apply for an exemption. So on the exemption board, is going to be myself, co-supervisor Jeffrey Loach Husky, and Gary Becker, who is the city administrator.
Economic developer.
Economic developer, sorry, apologies. So I think, in his position, will be working in tandem with the code, so. I make a motion, resolution twenty twenty three dash two, NEIC, commercial inspection contract and fees.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice. Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
I make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash three, NEIC, twenty twenty three fee schedule.
Second.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice. Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martina.
I am making a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty three dash six for the traffic signal.
Second.
Ice.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ice.
Yes, gonna have to be an annual fee for quarter elevator. Make a motion, we enter that contract for six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice.
Yes, keep going, Councilman Ice.
Also, I'm just, for a couple of months, a waiver to have an activity up at the skating rink this spring sometime until the four hole tournament. Make a motion.
Second.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice.
Brochus.
Yes. Councilman Rechner, finish this off.
Make the motion that we relieve city president troop of tax collector for the collecting of the twenty twenty two taxes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina. Ice. Brochus.
Yes.
I'm making a motion that we appoint delinquent tax collector to statewide tax collector service. There you go.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice. Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
And I make a motion that we have treasurer troop deliver taxes, the delinquent taxes to the tax collector.
Second.
Ice. Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Okay, I'm looking for approval for pay vouchers of sixty-two thousand five hundred and one dollars and forty cents from the general fund, and zero dollars for liquid fuels.
Second.
Brochus.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bornheart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ice.
Discussion items, there are some discussion items. Just recently, how we changed the job description and duties from the city administrator to the grant writer slash economic developer. There was some duties that were not listed in the new job description for the economic developer and grant writer. I spoke with Joel how we're gonna have a quick work session to make sure those job duties are being fulfilled and who those new job duties will be dispersed onto. So I just wanna make everyone aware of that, does anybody have any quick questions about that? Or just?
Let me have this.
Yeah, we decided on it, yeah, but preferably soon, so we get those duties fulfilled. I'm gonna turn this over to the chief about motorized vehicles driving upon the levee.
So I was approached by Mr. Lewis back there from the flood control. We're having a lot of issues with people riding their ATVs and other such little motorbikes and stuff like that up in the levee. Unfortunately, we can't actually control that too well, because there's only a couple access to it, and once the plane, the bus, or our cars across it, that's all, that's gonna do is rip it up even more. So I talked to Mr. Lewis about just putting some more signage up, anybody who can help with the public that can come out and try to, if they identify anybody or know anybody that's up there, it is illegal, stress passing under the state wall, and we are gonna cite accordingly if we can get enough information to cite them. Foot traffic's okay, it's just that the motorized vehicles, the ATVs and stuff are ripping up that dike, and that's an essential part of the flood control system, so we're just gonna be on that. And any help from the public that can give us, just a warning, if the paper can just put something out, people can just pass the word, stay off the dike with your ATVs and stuff like that.
All right, thank you, sir. So the agenda additions, this has kind of been, kind of got a little crazy here last year, how multiple people from the departments are asking to add things to the agenda, and the council person may not be aware that they're adding it, or not adding it, or whoever it may be. So if a supervisor, employee, whatever, wants to add something to the agenda, please make sure your supervisor knows or CC them in the email, so they're aware of it, so when the agenda item, though the agenda does come out, that you're aware of it, not saying who threw this on there. So it's just, you know, just to be more time conscientious for everyone involved on that, just so it makes everyone's life a bit easier, okay? Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that? I mean, just try to do more in-house, save time, work for everybody, so we're not, you know, second guessing, double checking ourselves there. Councilman Rechner, approval for private grant signatory, I know.
I'm not sure what, did I ever put this on, Victor, or?
Oh, sorry.
I was quite, I put it, but, yes.
I can speak with Jerome. I talked with Jerome about this before the meeting. I actually have prepared a resolution relative to the private grant signatories. However, I'm gonna suggest that we discuss that during the same work session as the city administrator job responsibilities, because what we're gonna need to do is put a monetary dollar amount figure on the grant signatories and who does what. So in order to do that, I think we could do that at a work session, then vote on it at the next meeting. I do have a resolution.
One of those things where the duties make sure it's getting covered, that the job doesn't fall.
Right, so it all, it all kind of runs together with the city administrative job responsibilities.
Yes, any questions on that? All right, next one, New Year's Eve celebration, just gonna put a wrap on that. For the events that happened that day, up at the ice skating rink, for the free public skate, we had five hundred and eighty-nine people, families, kids show up to the free skate, which was very successful, there were no issues up there, everyone had a good time. One thing we may have to look into going into the future is possibly getting more skates, because they ran out of skates, not only for, obviously five hundred people's a lot at one time, but due to the advertisement of like the free skating and having the billboard traffic signs around town, they, leading up to that weekend, Tammy, you may be able to help on that, they ran out of skates multiple days, they didn't have enough skates, had to turn hundreds of people away because they didn't have enough skates, so possibly looking into getting more skates from the more used sizes.
What is Councilman, or?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just reiterating that you're right. So, you know, getting more skates in there, because that will help, you know, generate more revenue up there and obviously not turning people away. So that was a good event there for New Year's Eve, for the kids and their parents and their families, they all had a good time. And then the downtown event, that was also a success, there were no issues downtown. The vendors were very happy, the people were very happy, so we put a, it was a good event, so just wanted to give everybody update on that. So they might have.
I just wanna make, the men and the women that have all the jobs, I know you spend a lot of time down there.
So the committee, the committee did a great job, I know Slade wasn't part of that, a bunch of other people were, so everybody, everyone part of that, it was a team effort that made it happen.
I saw a couple other nights that been over there. Remember when you were dancing, the scenes?
And, so any, any other comments about that? All right, so moving on to the next one, so planning for twenty twenty three here of city events. So last year, looking through the events that happened throughout the city here, there were many, we'll say, we're just gonna, down, down for this Market Street, Market Street was closed a lot last year, and a lot of the Market Street businesses were not very happy that, that the amount of times it was closed, because that was costing their business, people getting, getting access to it. So I know, this off the top of my head, I know the city SRI and the city organizations have multiple events that they do yearly, for example, like obviously our New Year's Eve, the Christmas in July, the River Fest, the DEI events, the Brews on Lake Augusta, some of those, music in the parks. So those are city events, obviously that happen here that, that need to happen. The one thing we gotta start, I think we gotta start narrowing down are the private events that are happening on Market Street, causing Market Street to be shut down. And I think Steve can speak about this, how PennDOT, all the road closures that are going in for PennDOT, they're starting to get a little bit more stringent on the ones that are allowing us to do it. Like for example, when we had the Halloween parade, that was totally new thing, that they weren't gonna approve their normal routes. So I think we gotta start narrowing the number of events that we have, at least downtown Market Street, throughout the city that require road closures. I think, because last year, we were looking at the event schedule, there were fourteen different Craft and Vendor events throughout the city. So moving forward, I think that'll have more of a focus on how many events we're gonna have, and be bigger events rather than having ten smaller ones, for example. I know Councilman Barnhart, you had something to say.
I was talking about the bit, yeah, I, I was thinking about that, where you had said, now, event, I'm, it's no secret, I'm vice president of the summary arts council, and we have the same event every year at the same time. And I realize there's a conflict now with the DEI wanting to do something new, which was something that we had done last year, and they were just, they're, it's not, it's our original idea, they were doing, they want to take it and run with it. But here is what I come up with, setting in my truck all day long, I thought of this. We need an event coordinator or coordinators. I feel that the SRI, summary arts council, DEI officer, Light Fest, and city representatives, or any other entity that would like to hold an event, so there are no two that are held at the same time or alike. The event coordinator should meet with all bodies at one time, I suggested, it's still early in the year, the second Friday of February, get involved to discuss their events, let them know the days they want, what they're going to do, and then the event coordinator should give them the responsibilities, this is what you need, this is the paperwork you have to have in, this is what you're going to do. And after they approve the schedule, they send it to the city council for a final approval. I feel Parks and Rec should point event coordinators, and I seen two names on that, Jody Sheldon and Don Shite. If, there's no objection to talk to them. And I think you have one group that goes for all the events. That way there's no two held on the same day, there's no two held, one one week and one the next week. That way you can spread it out, everybody knows what's going on, it isn't coming in sporadically at council meetings saying, hey, this is what I wanna have, this is what I wanna have.
I, I mean, I, I agree with you on that, but I think a bigger issue is that everybody wants to do the same event, but just with a different name to it, and instead of us working, the problem is, a lot of people can't work together and have, instead of having one big event, we have ten small ones with the same purpose. Like, for example, you know, most of the events that we have, nothing against any events, I'm gonna say that right now, so no one says, I accused anybody of anything. If you're having Craft and Vendor events, if you have them every day, every weekend, it's because you put a different name to it, it's still a Craft and Vendor event. So we gotta get some of these organizations and going back to the person in charge to start working together so it's one big event, not just four different small events. And I think the priority should be, the priority is first of all, the city organizations such as SRI, the city itself, Light Fest, DEI, those are all city entities, they should have priority for any event, then all the private events coming in after, then they get second one, priority.
Well, I disagree with you there, but I, I still think that you have somebody that would organize this. They organize what's going on, just like I said, we have, for the last seven years, we have Art and Curiosity the second, or the Saturday after Labor Day. Now, DEI's putting one in for the exact same day when they knew for seven years we've been doing that.
Well, we're gonna have a talk with DEI saying, because they want to have three events, we're gonna say, you have to put all three into one. And that's the problem, everyone wants to have an event every single month, but it's the same event, three different times throughout the summer.
You're bringing, you're bringing people into the city by having events, that's.
And you're not, and everybody that's having those events are for benefit of a different organization. That would be okay if only one was wanting to the same time, but.
But it goes back to, once again, you're gonna make more with one big event than having ten different teams.
So I, I just wanna mention something, I, I, I agree with John to appoint, you know, with Parks and Recs having somebody or appoint somebody that they go to instead of the city clerk or instead of the, that they coordinate these things, that that's the person they go to so the city knows what's going on. My son lives in a larger city and I, I think the more events you have, the better for a municipality. I mean, there are events down there that he's going to every weekend, him and his girlfriends or family. A lot of it's based on the same kind of thing, but it's a different group, you know, it's this Saturday they're doing this, then the following Friday, Sunday. There's always stuff going on. I think with the coordinator, you can coordinate better with where they're having it at and what dates they're having it at. Like certain people have, you know, we're gonna have, um, River Fest that, whatever that weekend, that's the weekend. Nobody else is gonna be holding anything else on the city property because that's that weekend, or your art thing. Or DEI wants to have something, but the Light Fest has their Christmas in July, you know, whatever year that is. For certain events, I think you don't wanna discourage that, I think you wanna have the more events, the better for, for the damn town. Now, shutting down streets, a lot of it was an anomaly because we had two hundred and twenty-five day birthday, so a lot was shut down. But I think, you know, you can, if you have somebody coordinating that, you know, from my perspective, like I, like I said, my son, I see, he's always going to events down the outside areas, always stuff going on, there's always something to do, I think we wanna do here, I think we don't wanna lose that.
And I, and I said, I, I, I agree with that, it's just like, you know, having, like you said, the Art and Curiosity fest, like that's only the one festival for that. Like it's, there's not another one five times, that's what I'm saying, it's different.
I get that it's not discussion time, but since you're talking about this and the only other organization you didn't mention that does events, is the Sunbury Art Council, I do feel like you're a little bit.
But you're not part of the city though, you're not, you're not a city entity.
Exactly, exactly, but there's no other, and you know what? Honestly, why isn't the Sunbury Art Council part of the city? We, we, we've been doing events since two thousand fourteen, okay? So this is our eighth year doing the Art and Curiosity's fest. We bring in hundreds and thousands of people every year, that event has been up for one day and we're already almost full with our vendors. It's not just a bunch of random vendors, it's unique vendors that are coming from an hour, two hours away to be there. That event has gained a lot of traction over the last eight years. To my surprise, I found out today that the city approved a food track festival the same exact day we've been holding our Art and Curiosity's fest for eight years.
What, what events that?
Our food track festival?
Yeah, which, what is that?
Diversity and Equity?
We never, we never, we didn't approve any events.
Well, but he has flyers all over the place, so okay, so maybe you didn't approve it, but he already has flyers out. Then I see he has another flyer for music, barbecue and fun on the river. Two weeks after, last year we did our Bluegrass Festival, which that's exactly what it was. Every time we do an event, we try to do something that's unique that another organization is not doing. The Bluegrass Festival was unique, nobody was doing anything like that. But he has the same exact event two weeks after our event. That's too much. He's a city.
And that's what I'm, I'm agreeing with you, that's what I'm referring to.
But, but, but he's a city organization and you just said that should have priority. Why should that have priority when we've already established that?
So, so you're, so lady, you're telling me a private event has priority over a city function? Is that what you're telling me?
No, I'm telling you, our organization, which is not just us doing it, or also brings a lot into the city, so that's unfair to us, we've been doing that for eight years. And you're saying his brand new event, he's never done before, has priority over that?
And, and has council approved that event? Council has not, you saying.
Then why are the flyers out in the community?
I don't agree. So you have to ask him that, we didn't approve any event at all, so that's somebody else approved it.
Andre Menreser.
Say his name, but I, I, I wanna speak for him, that's what, I wanna, I wanna speak for him, in regards to that, right?
Andre Menreser.
I understand that she's saying that, I gotta go with, with, with the chief said.
So you have to ask Parks and Rec, so Parks and Rec must have approved this, so that's no knowledge to us. So going back to what John said about having a coordinator, that's why we're having this conversation, it doesn't happen.
Honestly, the Sunbury Art Council, the things that we do within the community, we should be, we should be supported by, by the city as well.
And we're, I'm not saying you're not being supported, we're, I'm not saying your events are bad, I'm just saying, as John said, we gotta be more working on it. Now, I'm agreeing with what you're saying.
No, 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 I know that, but it doesn't, for me, it also doesn't sound that way. You're saying all these things are shutting down roads, but who, the only other organization that shut down the roads is us for our festival.
But I'm saying, that's with the city, everybody involved, we got a coordinator, as John said, with a coordinator. Because as you said, you hold an event, I'm saying, that's what we need more of, more of the different events, not the same event, five different things.
Well, I just don't find, I just don't find all the work that I put in for the last eight years and all the time I spend with the art, putting with the art council, trying to build up this nonprofit that we have, or trying to get these programs, like the things that we're going to raise money for are, are trying to raise money to go back into the community. We wanna work with this school, we wanna give his art scholarships, we wanna do music programs, we're giving him free instruments. It's not for our own benefit, it's for the community's benefit, so it should be supported. And I get what you're saying about my mom's garden, about everybody having, everybody having the theme event.
Do you think they spend money on that?
Well, I'm not trying to, we're not trying to do. We're trying to do every event that we do, it's different from the next event. One reason we started Art and Curiosity is because there's no, there's no people selling. A lot of these craft festivals also have other people who come and they sell, or they can be, and stuff like that. Yeah, but, but we did that so it was something that is unique to the community. And then we decided to add, because we're trying to encompass all the arts, so we, you know, we try to add music and we have dance and we do other things. And we're trying to do things like that, but then when I see things like that and he's promoting, uh, events that you said are not true.
I said, I'm sorry, they got approved.
No, no, and that's.
I didn't, no, I didn't say you, I said Parks and Rec Committee.
But it was here at a meeting, talking to Alex.
And he took a whole.
But she was, yes.
And it's fine, but, and, and, you know, and last year we came and we talked about doing our, our Bluegrass Festival with barbecue and stuff. And I know Rick liked that idea because he was like, oh, I always wanted to have, do something like that. But then, you know, we, we put our first thing, there's somebody who tries them like, wait a second, why is there other things going on the same day? No, no, I.
It's a big city, it's a big city.
But I like that idea and I like having all the organizations come together so everybody knows what's going on. I just don't wanna be excluded because.
Oh, no, it's not excluding anyone.
No, I mean. But just because they're under the city, do you know what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're saying.
It's not like we're just, like, we're trying to, we're willing to try to do some properties, we should be supported by the city. The city should have a partnership with the Sunbury Art Council, in my opinion. Because we don't have another art council, we have one and we have one, and we have the other.
Good suggestion there, Jerome. Alright, so, oh, please, sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Well, it'd be okay, well, we're on this discussion.
Go right ahead.
I have a suggestion, a resource idea, um, so I'll leave it for you. I'm not sure if you're already aware of this, but the chamber has a group that needs one to lead, it's once a month called, um, the Community Prosperity Group. And it brings together all the downtowns, so either from Silk Grove, um, Denville, Lewisburg. Um, Sunbury's popped on and off, I know Jody has participated. Um, but what it connects it to is what's going on around the valley, and then it tie into the media resources and put those events in the, um, in the newspaper or on the radio. And where it ends up helping is, it's, it's a beautiful collaboration that I'm still, because they'll say, well, I'm doing this event this week, you're doing that one this week, who needs what? And suddenly you're on a different layer, so it'd be really cool to be part of that valley picture and maybe, um, operating inward out, like get some foot traffic, get some assistance, make sure you're not, um, conflicting with events throughout the valley. So just another resource to grow out there, but, um, that could be something the event coordinator can connect into.
Any other comments on that topic that Councilman Ice brought up?
Okay, so I agree with what he was saying in regards to having someone organize it. Cause I'm, I'm kinda curious in regards to why does, why can't there be multiple events in one day in Sunbury when this is a big town? And there's so many ethnic and diverse, like, there's so many different people out here, so you might have a, a different event, a barbecue on Sunday from this group of people, and then you might have a barbecue from, but you said Bluegrass. I don't know too many people that I, that I associate with that's gonna go to a Bluegrass barbecue. I know more people that might wanna go to a multicultural, which, at the same time, when you're talking about things that's already going on in Sunbury, you have a whole nother group of people that's trying to get into, they're trying to get included in Sunbury.
No, I get that, what, what I was saying about having a festival two weeks after we're doing it is just have it original ideas, what I'm saying.
But what's, but what hap, what's original? What do you mean?
Well, we got, we can talk about it with the coordinator, so.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. But yeah, but what I'm saying, like, I feel like this should be, it should be room for everything.
Yeah, we're, we're, like you said, we'll, we'll get it figured out and how to get the logistics all figured out with the, John spearing the, spearheading the charge. Alright, so the fee schedule as we brought up, well, I guess beforehand, should I get those fee schedules in here? And making sure they're matching our ordinances and making sure they're up to date. I think the one thing to kind of look into, and I know it put a lot of controversy on it, is the use of the complex and the ball fields up there. I know Slade knows about this, how we charge the school district twenty-five hundred dollars a year to use the field because of, because of the, the soil that they wanna use for the infield, which is completely, I understand that. But all the other leagues coming in to use the field to use that exact same soil, and they're not getting charged anything. So I think that has to be either somehow worked out that these leagues coming in also has some type of maintenance fee to cover, you know, the, the normal wear and tear of the field, if something breaks, I know Steve.
Don't most of the leagues come in and do, well, I shouldn't say most leagues, my, my dad still does all of it.
Yeah.
Doesn't, aren't they supposed to be coming in and doing the fields? And cause I know my dad's good with them, does the fields, lines the fields and does everything.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying.
That's what I mean, that's part of a lot of that maintenance, so isn't there something already out there for those?
You mean like the fees, is that what you mean?
Yes.
I mean, that, there are, there are.
Well, yeah, I, I.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but there is, but there's nothing in place that'd be actually enforced, I think that's something we gotta look into.
Well, I know some, some other places, some of the organizations that hold it probably charge a fee or something. And it's, I was just wondering how that was all.
Obviously, I wouldn't say charge anything astronomical, just something to cover the cost, like for example, we ought, we ought to go up there and cut the grass to make sure it's nice for the tournaments. Or we gotta make sure all the garbage, I feel like, all that stuff takes time, the garbage bags. I know, I know Steve was there one time with his grandson, he was like, the bathrooms are locked and the porta potties were overflowing, there are no bathrooms he's using. We overflowed them.
No, but if you guys want a number on that, I have the numbers for how much I spend out of my investment for.
I mean, all it is is covering our costs, and we're not trying to, we're not trying to make anything, just covering the cost, and that's being considered.
That cover means nothing because you cut the grass for others, a tournament or not.
Correct, yeah, that's what I'm just saying, I, I, I'm telling you, I, I have my yearly amount of money and I spend my labor and everything else for all the different areas, that'd be more or anything that you do, so if you guys wanna break down that, that's good.
I think it's something we should look into just to make, because I would see those things wear out, things break, you gotta repair them, like the bathrooms up there. So I think it's something, like I said, like we have a fee to, uh, for Cameron Park, the riverfront, type it, we should have a fee for that, that's, that's my only opinion.
What was discussed years ago when yours was a lot and running some tournaments and stuff up there, was adding a fee or adding an extra dollar figure on the entrance fees for these tournaments.
Right.
And that would be earmarked to go to the Fortune Rec or for handling.
It should be just for up there, yeah.
For the maintenance of the.
Maintenance or upgrades for that facility, yes. So that was just a comment on the fee, so I was trying to get that fee settled in place. Any questions on that? Alright, the next one here, the Celatech slot, um, I, there's been a while since we talked about that, and I know there's conversations, but as of the city aspect, I mean, if we require that lot, we really don't have a plan for it right now, it's probably good that we start talking about that, so we have a plan in place. I think the big question is, how we, how are we going to fund our portion of it? I think that figured out probably sooner rather than later, so we don't use that P money. So I'd like to have, I mean, some, you, I'd like to have a work session prior to next council meeting, just to get the people in the room who should be.
Can't we just do one big work session because we have a lot more to do?
Well, yes, I'm saying. Excuse me, so as we get the P, with the room, like, you know, talking about like utilities with, you know, the authority, what we need for streets, so on and so forth, so if we do acquire our property, alright, what's our, you know, what's step number one, a day one, once we get it, type of thing.
All the infrastructure has been already being worked on.
Yeah.
We have numerous needs, uh, every month or so regarding, so let's go into, uh, Agnes Street and North Front Street and that complex. So infrastructure will be working on, we're working, putting the committee together, thinking the outside talks, most of this. UC's at twenty-two acres from the city, fiscal authority, and general, just the back.
So I think we should get that extended goal there, so everyone's aware, so, and like I said, going back to the big issue, how are we getting the funds to put up our portion of it? I think that conversation has to. I think that.
There's a meeting coming up, it was coming last week regarding that subject.
Alright. Back in July with Rajesh Funk, representative of Culver, so. Alright, so that's all I have on that, so we can fit, schedule, as you said, one big work session.
We're just gonna make sure we get ourselves enough time, we have a lot of different things we wanna try to talk about.
Excuse me. Susquehanna Art, uh, the ARP funds allocation, Councilmeister or.
Yes.
Or.
Or whoever wants to jump in on that.
Well, go ahead.
Um, we were just talking about, um, moving seventy-five thousand from Susquehanna to Market Street.
Why?
To, um, engineering costs, because it was.
The money's coming from the art money that was allocated for the traffic signal on North Front Street.
Yeah, the Susquehanna, right.
It's gonna be shifted out at the time being and being replaced on the backside. We wanna finish the project, the Market Street and then, uh, or the Tens Street.
So how are we coming up seventy-five thousand dollars short?
Um, it says the engine, the engine, it has to do with the engineering and the cost, it's even on that project.
Not the project, it was for the engineering.
Yeah.
But wouldn't we have known that prior to the final, I mean, that's to say, what if scenario, we didn't have this money, what would we have done then? So I mean, shouldn't our.
We looked at other options, this seems to be the best option.
So you're, so, so you're saying we're gonna, we're gonna get the seventy-five thousand dollars back that we're taking out of Susquehanna?
Normally we're taking out a lot of grant money, shift it over for that, okay? But this is easier and faster, Jamie would have been there and actually be at next council meeting giving a full breakout, where what?
But so, but we are gonna get reimbursed the money to throw back into there.
It's just, yeah, the discussion we wanna bring up was neither one of them would be here today.
Okay.
Do you, how many you say about this, Steve?
No, no, it's just gonna be key to getting that, that Market Street.
Well, I'm, I'm not just, I'm not just speaking that, it's just like, it seems like all these big projects are coming up short at the very end here.
Listen, it's, it, you're gonna have that, it's construction, there's gonna be areas, you can anticipate every single thing, you try to build as much as you can, anticipate as much as you can, but there's always gonna be things that, and then all depends on your grants, there's a lot of variables involved. It's not an exact science, so, you know, we do everything we can to avoid them and avoid a lot of them, but just wanted to be able to.
Any other thing on that, Councilman Ice? Alright, so AED equipment, um, the reason why I'm bringing this up because, uh, it's.
Excuse me.
Go ahead. Um, this was brought up by one of the Bucknell hockey coaches about how we don't want, we don't have one present at the ice skating rink when there's our games and practices taking place there. Nothing says we legally have to have one there, but knowing that we do have hockey leagues playing there. Nothing says we legally have to have one there, but knowing that we do have hockey leagues playing there, we do have swim competitions there, we have, um, swimming, learning to swim there and also other community events there, I think it'd be wise and our best decision to have them on our public locations, just to. Go ahead.
Um, since it's a, that's a, uh, a college sponsored sport, don't they have a trainer?
Yes, they do have the trainer, and the trainer, I spoke with our trainer, Mike the trainer from Schick, and I, he filled me in, he's like, listen, he's like, I bring my own for our event, but there's other events such as, like, we have the swim competition, the open swim, the public event with ice skating. I mean, we don't legally have to have one.
I don't think this county would need for AED anyways.
Yes.
The issue is just having people trained to get the league, that there are, there is a law that is terrible. Those are, that protects people from being able to use those that may not be trained. But the fact is that, you know, buying an AED is, is simple, if you buy an AED, and you buy it, you gotta have people trained to use it, and one, that makes you think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I.
I know it's a bad idea. But, you know, as far as Bucknell hockey goes, they have a trainer program with them. They're not smart enough to bring AED, they should be a trainer probably.
They do bring ones, yeah.
Because everybody.
Bucknell does, that shoe does not, and the, the youth group does not.
And, and it goes.
Bucknell has a trainer that carries one.
But I'm saying it goes back to our own liability of the OPG, of those other public locations, like, and I spoke with Kevin, we said, we do have the trust funds that could pay for them, pay for them, but. Or don't have an AED, going to a public event?
No. There's, there's no liability either way. We don't, there's no law that says we have to, there's no law that says if we do, we're liable if it's not used, uh, correctly. And what Spang's talking, Roman's talking about with the, uh, Good Samaritan law, is basically if we have an AED and someone who's not trained to use it attempts to use it to save someone's life, there's no liability for that because they're being a good Samaritan and doing what they can to save somebody's life. Therefore, we have no liability if we put them out to be used, even if someone who's not trained uses it in an attempt to save someone's life. So no, there's no liability there, but there is no liability for not having.
And, and I, the only thing odd about that is, like, my officer had to have CPR at first aid. So they're, all my officers are trained for first aid CPR, serve the lifeguards for the swimming team, they try a lot of first aids. So that's what I was saying, so like, I coordinate with Dysoner, they provide me with AEDs, so if something we contact, I.
I could tell you. You could probably, someone could contact Dysoner. If, if that's the route you'll go, if you want to go to, and, and probably a long place in the city. Like, see, you have a park, you're, you're in this building here, you have the ice rink, um.
I had, I actually have a CDR training coming up, uh, through the, some popular, top announcement from Dysoner.
Right, they offer the AED training, it's a training now, so it's all like a hard, I haven't had one in years, but it wasn't.
And the American Heart Association poster said they would train us and also gave us resources where we could purchase one as well, so. I think it's something we should look into at least, because, you know, better to be safe than sorry. Especially, you know, if it was your son, daughter, grandson, you'd wanna have that lifesaving that device there.
Does anybody know what you're on?
They were different costs, I, I.
There's a couple hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars? I mean, for that matter, we could get there. Right. Or we could get area residences, we're not out.
I have a solution, once it's public comment.
Alright, and then the last one here, the emergency plan, this has been something that, that we discussed a while ago. I mean, we put, we made Paul Brown the director, but we never actually took, get the process going, so I'll get the process going on this, I'll add that to the work session as well. Of getting this emergency plan put in, not just for. Yeah, but I mean, yeah, about getting the plan going, and now.
Could they even change the final one?
It's still Mr. Dan, you bro. So this is.
Yeah, Dan's not, yeah.
So that's why we gotta update it and get moving on this, and we can add that to the work session. He's, he is the coordinator, but I think, I'm not trying to, I'm not, like, once he got that title, I don't think we've moved forward since he got the title, so.
I'm like, wait, this didn't have to be right now, we.
Alright.
As far as I know, Steve engineers job, because he's the one who provides us.
Alright, so we have a lot to do in that work session, we may have to have multiple. Alright, announcements, uh, the next council meeting will be held on August January twenty-third here at City Hall at six fifteen. Now, is there any public comment at this time? Chief, go ahead, I'll work my way back.
Uh, that's what we get for an F A L meters, we have about half of them in, the other half should be coming in by tomorrow, or they're not already here. Uh, the, so they're, they're being installed as we speak. The text-to-pay portion is not up yet, it'll be up probably within the next couple of weeks, we're still working out some bugs. Um, if you go online to the city's website, the permit, the permits are on the website now. Unfortunately, we have no control over it, but there is a convenience fee, those permits, when you buy them. The only thing I'm gonna ask is, once the text-to-pay app comes, or not the app, text-to-pay comes into fruition, well, you know, make sure we have something out there for people, it's, it is very simple to use, it's not that difficult, but there are, again, there's convenience fees, we have no control.
Just like any.
Anywhere you go, that's what they have. The only thing I ask is somebody contact the county, because I know they buy bulk permits for jury duty. We're gonna have to let them know that that fee has went up.
We talked about those fees too, because I want someone to reach out to me from the county about their guards and everything. Like, how, did, did they do anything special before?
They probably just went down to the, to the office and picked them up. But now, this is just another, this is just a convenience, they can go online, do it, not have to worry about.
Well, they, well, they were talking about, uh, they reached out because they were saying, we were, I know we've had this discussion, but about how much it would cost them each day to come to work and pay the bar, so I didn't know it would.
It's a four dollar fee for a daily permit, the three dollar convenience fee is.
Well, that's what I mean, and I think they're talking worried about their paying.
You're better off paying monthly.
Right, and that's what, I didn't know if they had an agreement with that ever before. Do you know what I mean, if they, if they paid different.
I don't know, we're agreeing with the county.
As, okay.
Other than, other than the, 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 the jury groups.
Okay.
Uh, and they would come.
Well, they just, some of their employees were questioning how much it was gonna cost them to come to work now in this apartment. So they reached out to me, so I wanted to see if they had, the employees did anything different.
No.
Shop the county to let them know, uh, eating some, I imagine they already know.
Well, I would imagine, uh, I don't know, Kevin shared or somebody shared, but I mean, whoever's.
Kevin, I think Kevin would send them the bill, or, or, I know they were paying a bulk amount.
What they're doing now is they're, they're, they're going mailers, and the mailers, they're sending out, I, I just wanna say, sending, say they're sending out five hundred. That you're paying us twenty, or four dollars, that's two thousand bucks.
Yeah.
And if they all don't come for jury duty.
They're, they're just out.
Before, we were taking orders. We were giving them that, and then we were supplying, sending information to the county with the request for payment, and that was there.
Hey, just somebody's gotta reach out, well, well, that, that, those fees did go off. That's all, just want to hear it updated.
Thank you, chief. Please state your name.
Oh, you're Rosencrans? Okay, so I just wanted to maybe double back to the events stuff. Um, so again, obviously, Light Fest, this falls under the city, um, so just to keep in mind, some of the things, um, Light Fest is growing, um, exponentially each year. I mean, when we started Christmas in July, we started with sixty-four vendors, and last year we were up over a hundred. And this year's, um, is gonna be Christmas around the world, so we're looking to, we keep adding the touch truck and adding all those things. So unfortunately, having it downtown Market Street works best because I need to have the water, I need to have access to all those things, and yes, it's a road closure, but the one thing that I am due diligent about is the amount of talking to the businesses and making them part of that process. Especially, especially with Christmas in July, encouraging them to come out on the street, their threaders is gonna be doing cheesecakes, but you know, cheesecakes, cheese states out there, um, you know, we're doing around the world, so, you know, I already talked before, if she's her outside there is gonna be Ireland, you know, so they can add it to the process. So that's so important in keeping those relationships with the downtown business. The only other thing I need to advocate for is the Santa parade. This year, we chose, um, at the eleventh hour, I was asked to close down the street. Well, I've never closed Market Street for the parade, however, moving forward, this year, it was so well attended, there was safety issues on Market Street as we were coming down, because cars are parked and the kids were out with the bumper of the car, and literally, like, they're excited, they see Santa, they're hoping to set the fire truck. So unfortunately, now whether we change the route, whatever we do is not gonna make anyone happy, I admit that. But I really, if we continue down Market Street, I'm gonna be asking to close Market Street down. It's last Friday, I understand that the parade doesn't happen until six P M. But the safety issue this year, um, we really need to look at that, just like for the Halloween trip. But again, I added vendors to the light, this, the light tree lighting and that. So again, that's where I already was talking with Cardellas on market to include them in that process. So for including those businesses in that process, they're, they're okay with that, okay? And, and if they're in that, like, Cardellas for that, for the parade, she just had people come in for back door, to show we need that. So I'm just advocating for those two things, that, you know, to do the road closures, because I really can't, those things and keeping it in the middle here, it works, I get it, but it works for that. Um, other things, yes, can go down to the river, uh, you know, or elsewhere, but, um, so that's all I have to say about that. And I, I absolutely agree with the coordination and the coordinator and all that, I think it's important so that there can be more than.
Yeah.
One event, but, and also just the fact that as a citizen, I'm going to end with, I'm gonna ask that whether events are approved or not, and they're being marketed, that's a problem for a city committee, so that's what I'm gonna say. I just did my paperwork today for Light Fest, uh, to get it in there, because I'm seeing, like, all of a sudden, I'm seeing this influx, and I'm going, ooh, wait, I need Cameron Park. But really, until events are approved, if it's a city committee, until they're approved, that marketing should not be happening. The other thing that I strike, the AED, there is the Alyssa Dressler Foundation, um, which does the event at high, the high school in February. Alyssa Dressler Foundation donated an AED to the Goodwill, so I can get you information on that, I, I fill it out, and they might, it's probably a new brainer.
Yeah.
Um, and they do the big, uh, heart screening event at the high school in February. So I can get you the information on Alyssa Dressler, uh, they brought the AED right to the Goodwills. And next month, um, all the Goodwills bartenders and trustees and fire foot, we're all, I'm putting them all through BLS training.
That'd be great, yes, that's.
So, so that's the other thing, I can get you the Alyssa Dressler Foundation, piggybacking off the training. I'm a Dyssinger, and so it's just being an American Heart BLS instructor, so we could do, that, I'm doing the training and not charging the Goodwills. Okay, so I think it's imperative that, uh, as many staff as we can in the city, not just the ice rink, obviously, your lifeguards are in Ronins, but, um, I, I would encourage that as many staff and have as AED in as many buildings, we should have one in this building. You just never know when that general probably, you know, someone's gonna be down. Um, but I will take it one step further, we are American Heart instructors, so we do a service, and we can hold those trainings, all people per class, and they spend dollars a lot, so, just to quick check on that, but.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please state your name, sir.
Uh, Joe Markheller, the State Tree Commission. This week, the city had an opportunity to get, like, twenty-five plus, uh, trees from the ten million tree organization in Pennsylvania. And, uh, we have a, there's a deadline of January fifteenth, and I can request how many trees to like, and I, I thought it's a good opportunity to get trees for maybe the sweep project or the North Four Street Complex around, maybe the open house, which you park now, and just plant some trees, and do some things around that area. They're, they're gonna get back to us on that, they're not sure exactly what species they are yet, because they, they have to get in touch with the, the nursery and see what they're planting this year.
You can give that information a little bit around here, okay?
But I, I, we would have to have somebody, I don't know if it's, uh, the economic development coordinator would be the one to apply by the fifteenth. We need somebody to be able to put the right information into the city, whether it's nonprofit numbers, that kind of stuff that we don't have.
That's a Sunday.
I know, but that's their deadline in state for some reason, I don't know why they're gonna, like, you can apply online, it just depends on what, what you can do it, but.
Yeah, like I said, Joel, you get that stuff to send it over to Derek and everybody else that we know.
We did send it to Derek already, he's having better response, and I'm just wondering if it was somebody else that would be better to handle it, or if that's.
I'll check it tomorrow and see.
Yeah, I'll send that to you, we'll talk about it.
You can get twenty-five plus, and then the, the cost of maintenance and stuff can be used as a matching, uh, matching, uh, money for whatever grant it is. There's any question for that? They said that, uh, any, any work sitting as, in-house volunteers or whatever will count as matching.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it. Go, go ahead, Victoria, you're, I'm working my way back, I'm sorry.
So, um, just on grants, um, moving forward and all the changes or whatever, um, the committee, one of the things I'm hearing as, as I follow up and I try to get my grants in ahead of time, like, way before Light Fest, um, I have a grant right now, so I'm meeting with Eric next week, but, and I know this has been set plenty of times, but we really need to look at, like, a grant schedule, so that way we're not all putting in at the same time, because what happens is when someone gets bumped, and, you know, so if we can sort of look at that moving forward, because like, I just.
We kinda talked about doing something like that, and, and what's going forward, and keeping a, more report on what's going in, what's coming out, how is the whole process, so we can have a better track.
Right, because like, right now, I need to apply in Rosen Room, right, I just followed up with Julie today, it's over, because we give off the books at, uh, Sunbury's celebration, so I need to get that in now, because they need it in June, um, which, that's only for books and golf supplies. So really, if you're gonna be bumping me, like, like, if it's a Degonstein or Firecutter or something like that, if there's three or four other city committees, then someone's getting bumped, and unfortunately, and, you know, I've never been bumped.
I see what you mean.
But, but that, and then what happens is they're like, well, okay, we got six city things to stick.
Yeah, big issues, yeah.
Try to figure that out, and if I can help in that process, and I try to get mine done through these, so that way I'm. The only other thing is Goodwill Playground, just wanna update, and I know COVID, um, in the summer, but, but Goodwill's Playground, we're moving forward, we're, uh, because that is an asset, our stadium's a version of it, to, um, be getting some grant funds, and be back to update our playgrounds, uh, one of the things we were just, uh, we have, they're vandalizing things. So Goodwill's have to look at that, they're pulling all the fences, they're driving the fences, and they're very, uh, intuitive, uh, because they took center blocks, they found on the playground and board, so now we have my license in there, for now, I keep up the date, but they took center blocks for the two-by-fours, and they jumped the fences, and to get back out, they ran up to two-by-four over the fence.
You stand in years on America.
And not to mention all of those litter, because we have to have a cleanup party at there. But the other thing we were looking at is that the, the general, the citizens around there are parking one of our parkings. They are ripping up our property. Um, so just to warn you that we're looking at, there's gonna be no parking, and we'll warn them before that, because we'll give them notice, and we'll give them an offer so. We're not trying to be jerks, but what we're trying to do is that playground is also used for the daycare on Reagan Street, and Forest uses our playground also for one.
Yeah.
And also there's an evacuation spot for back school, particularly school districts. So, and the other thing is our thought process is update that playground and get things in there. You've got sweep down the street, so sweep people coming in there, they can come up here and have a little, have a picnic, or use that for overflow, or whatever we need to do. So we wanna work with sweep and get that up, so we're looking at to get new equipment. It's all gonna take time, but the most important thing is keep it cleaned up, cleaned up, and the weeds cut and all that stuff, and that, Goodwill's is on that, so just wondering how. So as we're moving forward with that, we'll keep you updated on the changing of parties, because they're just ripping up our ground.
Alright, thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
Real quick.
Thanks, please state your name, sir.
Leon, Leon Harrison. Um, I know you guys talk about, uh, doing Sausage and Allen Streets, is it, you guys ever wanna be at the street, especially like the signs right there?
So that's.
On the list. On the list?
On the list.
That's worse than Sausage, I don't know that. And one other thing is, um, the new commercial thing, it says three apartments and more is considered commercial now. But you also say, like, that you sent from chapter one thirty-four, residential, so what's, like, can you?
The residential and, uh, commercial.
I can, I can. You got a name for it, Mr. Harrison? So what you're, what you're, what you're saying is, we have a apartment building of three or more units.
Yeah.
So because your, your property does not have any commercial, this, physical, commercial characteristics, just residential properties, and under state residential definition, it does say three units or more. However, the city has chose to, uh, eliminate that, um, to just keep it residential, so, uh, under your exemption form, you wanna check that that you will follow the, uh, chapter one thirty-four, uh, protocol structure.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Steve, go ahead.
Just with all these applications for closing Market Street, I want everybody to keep in mind, that's not our street. That's up to Penda, whether they close it or not, they don't leave you know until a week or two prior anymore. There is no early, uh, approvals on that. There is no early, uh, approvals on that. I'd also wanna remind you guys that PennDOT is paving Front Street this year, which will affect what is going to be approved, okay? I've talked with them right now theoretically, theoretically, it's supposed to be done before River Fest. Don't know that for sure, it hasn't been released, I'm just saying, it's their project.
I'm going to the door.
You ain't seen nothing yet, but, just that you guys know that, when you guys are planning your big events, always have an alternative. Whether you're gonna go up on the front street, whether you're gonna go down the gyms area down there, whatever we need to do to the high school, whatever, the guys need to have an alternative plan in place.
Any other public comment?
No.
Alright, turn this week.